8:00, four o'clock work session for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. We are starting today with the work session on supportive housing. And this is a time when we get to ask questions of staff and partners. We do not take public comment during our work session, but if you'd like to stay for our business meeting at 5:30, we always take general public comment at that time. So with that, I think we'll kick it to Sarah or Jill, how about Jill? To start with, who will we have at the table and what will we be talking about?
Thanks, Commissioners. We have a host of, we have a lot of our supportive housing partners here that are going to be available to answer questions if they come up and provide some color commentary as the opportunity comes up. And then Angie Bauer from Tenants to Homeowners is on her way here. She went to the courthouse accidentally, and she's going to talk a little bit more about some of the projects that Tenants to Homeowners has underway and provide some commentary about the value of the work that we're doing around developing a case management framework for a supportive housing case management to support our work to advance the strategic plan. I'm going to share my screen real quick. Okay. Move all these little screeny things around off my screen. So happy to be with you all today and provide an update on the county's supportive housing work. This work is directly related to the county's support for the A Place for Everyone strategic plan to address housing and homelessness in Douglas County. This is one of the priority areas that the county is leading. And I have a fun little picture here of the group of around 45 case managers and supportive housing workers that participated in two, two-day, total of four-day trainings with the Corporation for Supportive Housing in February and March. And this was right before we ended our sessions and went back out into the world and had a debrief yesterday, but I like this picture just to remember that day because it was a really great investment of time and energy of the folks that participated. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Screen to move forward. There we go. Okay, so a reminder regarding our goals for supportive housing that are outlined in A Place for Everyone. Our goals are that by 2027, we're going to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to chronically homeless individuals by 30. We're going to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to chronically homeless families by 2. We're going to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to homeless near elderly 55-plus individuals by 50 units. We're going to, by 2027, increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to justice-involved individuals by 20. We're going to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to homeless child welfare-involved families by 10. And we're going to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units dedicated to homeless young adults aged 17 to 23 by 8. And finally, our goal is by 2027 to increase the number of transitional housing units dedicated to homeless individuals with a substance use disorder and/or mental illness by 15 in Douglas County. So our first strategy within that plan, and I'm going to highlight two strategies in that plan today, and I put a lot of information in the cover memo to support and prepare for today's meeting. But the first two strategies in our supportive housing plan are what are going to be the primary focus of today's conversation. Strategy one is to develop a five-year supportive housing capital improvement plan that reflects supportive, trauma-informed housing design and community integration, including capital and operating budget. So not just what it's going to take to build and acquire the properties, but what it's going to take to operate the facilities. We've also merged the supportive housing and affordable housing capital teams together because what we knew all along, but was really emphasized in the trainings with the Corporation for Supportive Housing, is that at its foundation, supportive housing is affordable housing with supportive housing on top. So we know we need to work in tandem together, but we have that work well underway. This slide provides information that gives us, gives a breakdown of the cost estimates that it's going to take to reach those goals that I mentioned on the previous slides. These are, these are the numbers that build the cost estimate that was presented in the materials shared with the county commission and the city commission in January related to cost estimates to implement the plan. So you see the five-year total cost, if we were to spread out this cost over five years, and what that looks like from a one-time capital investment and ongoing operating. These are estimates. These numbers are based on the Corporation for Supportive Housing numbers that were given to us about what we could expect for, to develop the properties, acquire the land, and what the operating cost could look like. Corporation for Supportive Housing worked closely with some of our local providers to make sure that these estimates were as close as possible. But this was, these are 2022 numbers, so I did put a bit of an escalator on these just to get us a little closer to what we thought it would cost. But you can see what those estimates break down to in this slide.
And Jill, with each of those estimates, those are reflecting the numbers you previously said, so like for 55 and over, it was 50 units. That's what's reflected in here.
Yes. Yeah. So that's what, this is what it would cost to accomplish our goals in our plan estimated.
Yeah, but that wouldn't all be us.
Correct. Cost estimate. I think that's been an important distinction, and it might come up later this evening when we talk about the resolution for A Place for Everyone. The direction that the city and the county commissions gave to staff was to come up with cost estimates. What would it cost, what would an estimate look like to implement the plan? Our direction was not to come up with a way to fund it. Those are part of the strategies, and that's what strategy one speaks to, is to develop that five-year supportive capital improvement plan and the operating budget. So we're working on that. But again, this is what it would cost to implement the plan if we wanted to have a sense of the total cost. So the next slide I wanted to show you is, you saw versions of this in some of the pre-meeting materials, but this gives the commission a sense of, what have you funded in the past? What are you currently funding? And then it tees up what's been requested that is related to supportive housing for the 2025 budget, just to give commissioners a sense of what have we done historically. This isn't a full picture, of course, because if you look at the line for Burt Nash, that 645 for FY 2025, that's just for transitions. Our commitment to funding transitions started a few years ago, and it has, it's grown over the years, but we have been, we have been investing in supportive housing for a good amount of time. Artis Helping the Homeless is another good example of that.
And Jill, this slide goes without saying for most, but the 2025 budget requests, those are not funds that we have looked at within our budget process yet and have not agreed to?
Not yet.
That was just what's been requested from us.
Yes. And I'm going to come back to, we'll come back to this because one of the things that, you know, staff wants just to think about, how do we approach this work holistically to support our plan, but not, and how do we think about these requests that are already, we know that are coming through the budget process, and how we've approached funding these projects in the past? Want to make sure that we do them in a way that aligns with our framework for A Place for Everyone. So I don't see, there's Angie? All right, Angie's here. So I'm going to walk through, Tenants to Homeowners, part of our, the, let's see, I'm going to go back here. Tenants to Homeowners, we made a very significant investment, not only in each, there's a lot, all these projects here on the ARPA funds. Tenants to Homeowners, the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. We made some significant investment, one-time investments in these properties to, which will be developed to have more supportive housing to meet our goals. I know Shannon Ahri with the Housing Authorities here, they're making progress on Clinton Place, which is going to be dedicated to that 55-plus population, and they're making progress there. But I asked Angie to come be here today just to be a representative of Tenants to Homeowners, because in addition to the projects that, I got some pictures of the individual sites that they have under development right now. Angie can provide some really important, I think, commentary on the supportive housing case management framework work and why that's, why that's so important, based on the work that Tenants to Homeowners has been doing. But quickly, I'm going to walk through, just give you a sense of some of these individual properties that are under development. And Angie, if you want to shout out anything on any of these, go for it, but I might just pop through them real quick, and I can toggle back and forth if need be. Rebecca Buford could not be with us today, and she apologizes, but she was going to hit some of the highlights on each of these properties. But what you see here is 1040 Oregon. These projects are all going to be committed to supportive housing once they're completed, working with our different partners. In your packet, there was some great background information on Tenants to Homeowners, and there's a page that just breaks down all of the supportive housing projects that they support. And this is how these properties are going to be used. I just wanted to walk through them real quick. This one is a partnership with KU School of Architecture and their Dirtworks Studio. I think in my inbox, I have an invitation to an open house that I need to, if you all don't have that, I need to forward it on, they're having an open house on Saturday from 12 to 4. Here we see 501 North Street that they hope will be ready to lease this summer. It's an updated and improved housing stock that they're proud of, that a state was donated to Tenants to Homeowners, and there's additional land that's available to develop additional homes on this property that they're looking forward to. 520 Perry Street, it's a partnership with Build Smart. It's about an accessory dwelling unit with a carport they completed in the past year, and they hope to have some additional, additional units developed on this site, I believe.
There will be four total.
And right now, the notes I had from Rebecca was that the single person that's living there right now was a referral from Reentry, Artis Helping the Homeless. It needs to be green.
Oh, I don't need to hold it.
Sorry. Technology is not my thing. It will be a referral from Reentry or Artis Helping the Homeless in our collaboration with them.
I have a question. So Build Smart as a company is no longer, I thought, so how does the collaboration go on?
Rebecca was able to secure some of the units after it went out of business, so we have those on site to continue the builds.
So the wall panels were delivered ahead of time, and then it's on Tenants to Homeowners to assemble from there?
Correct.
Thanks.
1210 East 13th Street, it's a partnership with the Limestone School, set to be complete later this summer. There'll be two supportive rentals, once it's, those units are completed later this year. 914 Ward Street is a partnership with Peaslee Tech. There's two lots that they hope to have, be able to put four units on with an estimated completion at the end of this year. Any questions on those properties? I wanted to give examples of those individual scattered sites properties because historically, I think we have a lot more familiarity with these single-site properties, which we have some great examples that are under development right now that I mentioned, what Burt Nash has happening over on Rockledge, Clinton Place, and then the Castle on the Curve project that Habitat for Humanity has underway. And you'll be seeing a project for DECA on the First Step campus later this year. And then we have Cardinal Housing that is going to be a new partner that you'll be seeing some projects from, and of course, Artis Helping the Homeless.
All of those that you went through, those are rentals, and they are operated by Tenants to Homeowners, so the supports are also through Tenants to Homeowners?
No, the supports come from community support providers, whether it be Burt Nash, or Radac, or Minds Matter, depending on what the needs of the individual are, individual is. I'm really more of a resource getter. If individuals need some extra support, I'm there to provide that, though I don't provide any primary case management.
But is Tenants to Homeowners still coordinating, working with those other partners, or is the case management coming from someplace else?
The case management is coming from other organizations. I oversee the housing and kind of pool together those resources and the community supports. And usually, we do like team meetings and collaborate on what the needs are of the individual in a trauma-informed, person-centered way.
Commissioner, really, can I pull on that thread just a little bit and ask, is it true that the leases for each of these units that have some sort of supportive services attached include that other organization, whether it's Burt Nash? I mean, not that the organization or the case management provider is a part of the lease in a legally binding way, but am I correct in that the leases are structured to talk about the services and agreements around engaging with services, depending on what the level of housing is?
It's not a requirement to engage in services. However, statistically, we have found that those who engage in services are much more successful. The hope is that when they come into housing, that those services are already in place, and if they're not, then we do individual assessments and try to do referrals based on needs. Not everybody gets supportive services other than kind of what they get organically when community support providers come into the different communal housing. But it is highly encouraged, but not required.
So I just wanted to ferret that out just a little bit. So in terms of like the housing-first model, housing-first is sometimes criticized as being not having supports or not moving people forward with, with goals. But this is meant to be supportive, meant to be working on substance use issues, or mental health issues, or physical care issues? Or is it truly a housing-first, and everything else is optional?
That's a tricky question. Everything is optional, though again, highly encouraged. What I've found is, by building the relationship with the individual, they're much more open to being referred on to services if you've, you've kind of met their fundamental needs of human connection. I have had individuals come into housing that were totally against supportive services, though through the process of working with them on a daily basis, I've been able to build those relationships, so they are open to services that they need.
And we know that that distinction between the supportive property manager role and the supportive service provider is an important, it's important to distinguish that between two different entities. So there isn't a conflict in terms of, especially when somebody potentially might lose their housing, it, making that distinction between the service provider that's there advocating on behalf of, everybody's advocating on behalf of the client, but it can be a little trickier when the property manager is thinking in terms of protecting their property.
So you said supportive property manager. Is that your role?
That's my role. I'm that, my title is Housing Care Coordinator, but I oversee all the supportive housing for Tenants to Homeowners.
And that's different than case management?
I am the, if you will, Housing Case Manager, and the only one that exists within Tenants to Homeowners, so I am that person.
Just for housing, yes. And Angie works strategically with partners at Burt Nash, DECA, Heartland Health, to get to coordinate the care as much as you have capacity for. And I think that's, we know that she does the best she can, but there's a lot more room to help fill those gaps and coordinate care for some of these folks. But what Angie, I think you've learned at Sunrise House in particular, and some of the other supportive congregate sites, is you need to have those relationships with the different providers for clients to be successful.
Absolutely. It has to be a team effort, and I couldn't do it without the other providers in the community. It's those, those collaborations that really make this partnership successful, and the individuals that we serve. I have a lot of act case managers and stuff in Sunrise House, which is a 12-unit communal housing. And the neat thing about that, with so many of those service providers in and out of that home, individuals who wouldn't typically get services are kind of getting services just by those, those professionals being in the building. I've had many Burt Nash case managers who would say, hey, how about this person? What do you think about this? And it's not even someone they're providing service to, however, by being in the home and, and building relationships with everyone there, they're able to kind of see a need and address it and connect the dots, if you will.
I consider Tenants to Homeowners, the Housing Authority, potentially, you know, Cardinal Housing, to be our supportive housing providers in the community. They own the units, they have an interest in maintaining their units, they want to see the client successful too, but they do ultimately want to protect their, their units to be used by other folks. And there's a delicate, the success of the client, they both, along with the supportive service provider, again, Burt Nash, Heartland, DECA, LCS even, those two need to work together ultimately for client success, but they represent distinguished, they have distinguished roles in supporting the client.
So thank you for that, Jill and Angie. So I'm just trying to get my, my mind around sort of the supportive service structure here, and it sounds like there is one role that's happening around property and management and the home, and then there's another that's around the multitude of services. Is there someone in between those two, or those are?
The client.
Yeah.
The individual. And I mean, Matthew, Matthew might be able to give, give a good example of, you know, when we talked about that permanent supportive housing grant, what, what is going to be necessary to keep the person housed? What are the kind of services they're going to need? It's, Angie mentioned it earlier, it's person-centered, it's individual-based, it's all going to look a little different and leverage different partnerships.
I know we'll need to move on also, but I just wanted to, as we're looking at a continuum of care, a spectrum of care from folks that need, you know, a fair amount of, you know, hands-on kind of supports, but there's also this kind of little less, less acuity where they can, where folks can work with traditional landlords, property owners. Is there somebody who does something like your role for private landowners that can? Because I think, I hear from landowners that say, I would be willing to take chances on people that are a little trickier if I didn't feel like I was in it alone, if we had someone we could go to when, when we, when we hit a snag. Is that something that is provided in our community or talked about?
I think it's, in a lot of ways, it's Gabby. Gabby's role plays, comes into play there, but the landlord liaison position that has been at the Housing Authority historically. But if we look at the continuum of folks that we need to serve in the community, the lower need, folks that just need a little bit of rent assistance, maybe a little bit of coordination with a provider like Ballard Center, things like Judge, just to make sure they've got the supports that they need, and then they're off on their way, that's what, that's the work that Gabby's doing through the HSC, and in also getting more into that homelessness prevention space. But at the higher end of the spectrum is where you see Matthew's team, and when you talk about Sunrise House, they're taking folks right off of the coordinated entry list. So you are seeing more high-acuity folks there, but you are seeing folks at Sunrise House that are, have really stabilized and are there and providing a kind of informal peer support role.
Yeah, I can expand on that a little bit. So in respect to the kind of liaison process with private landlords, we are starting to do that work. The nature of our organization and the clients we serve, we're kind of like the ER. We're starting on the kind of the high-end, folks with high needs. But for example, we have a partnership with Union at the Loop, and where we have an office space, and we're staffing that office space several hours during the week, multiple days throughout the week, to help support clients that we have there that they have concerns about. This project started, I think, six, seven months ago, we started planning on it, had to get some MOUs in place, but that landlord work is something we are targeting in, and how we expand our service availability. And we have some other landlords that we're talking about the same model about and trying to implement it within their spaces as well. Again, that's kind of for folks who do have higher needs, and we're starting on the end of the spectrum. So there are gaps, there are for sure gaps in, in the community of need for folks who don't fall into a specific category of service that our agency or another agency may be built to serve. So as we continue to fill other gaps, those will become more evident. And you'll see that across the spectrum of services, including shelter and permanent housing. For example, as LCS increases their bed capacity and we get folks into shelter, they tend to be folks who are more apt to use that service. And so the individuals who stay out in the community who aren't in shelter will tend to be the more acute, harder-to-serve population. So we'll kind of whittle things down all into the spectrum. But in relation to supportive housing, we are starting to do that landlord liaison work, and even placing staff in their facilities.
I just think it's a good point for the community that we're working on both ends. So we're working on the really, the trickiest, you know, high-acuity folks that need a lot of supports, and it costs a lot, but also to do that work on the, the other end of the spectrum of just houselessness prevention, of keeping people housed in the community so they don't have the trauma, so they don't have the expense, and it's just keeping it further upstream. So I just, thank you for humoring me with that.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's one of the successes of the Housing Stabilization Collaborative, is that it really does work in terms of that lower end of the spectrum fix. It brings the case managers and the agencies together, all around bringing that, that short-term assistance that hopefully has a long-term effect for the clients and their long-term success. But figuring out what we need to be, to meet our goals related to the plan, developing this, establishing this community supportive housing case management program, what we, what we've known for a good amount of time, but I, I think it really played out when Sunrise House first launched, when the county received a housing first grant from KEDS, was people, people did supportive housing case management in many different ways. And it was not, it was not working as well as it could. And so the reason this was, this became one of the strategies in the plan was because if we knew if we were going to hit our goals of meeting those priority populations that we talked about and have those units available, we have to have that, what does the operating look like? If, who's going to, depending on who ends up funding those operating costs, we want to make sure that whoever's funding that is funding a, an operating model that's based on a solid framework that we have shared buy-in into. So the work that we did with the Corporation for Supportive Housing was just a first start. I talked about in the cover memo, the identified trainings that that team of individuals identified as being crucial to make sure that all the providers have access to. And we're going to be working to develop a training calendar that will be implemented for the remainder of this year, and then designing an ongoing training calendar that will be available to the staff next year, and then on into perpetuity, that the county hopes we can, we can really continue to lead organizing, scheduling those trainings to make sure that the staff have access to these, these trainings and best practices, because we heard from them that it was really valuable. We did a debrief with those, with the folks that attended the session on Monday, and they really thought that, there were folks that had, this was all new information to them. They'd never had the opportunity to take a deep dive into issues like harm reduction, housing first, tenant eviction processes. We spent all that time together, and they really felt that they were being invested in, and there's value in that to keep this work moving forward.
Jill, I have a question about that. I was really excited to see that listed out and think that that's a really important strategy in terms of really building some continuity and shared understanding and language and practice. And I know you're in the beginning stages of coming up with that training calendar. Has there been, when I look at these, I can see that there are probably a number of experts in our community who can provide these trainings. Maybe not every single one of them, but a vast majority of them, I think. But to that end, I'm just curious about the sustainability of that and the conversation around, if we do bring in any sort of outside professional development or training, but what does it look like to train the trainer, to establish local folks who are likely to sort of be around in this ecosystem for a while that can really help continue with onboarding new staff, especially as organizations grow?
Yeah, I think just, if, if we're going to have, supporting what we're now calling the supportive housing collaborative, that, that's going to be a, supporting that collaborative model and the training curriculum and the development, I'll talk in a minute, of an eviction for eviction. eviction, eviction prevention program and development and adherence of the MOUs. Right now, it's the county that's going to be supporting that work and at least making sure that it happens and it's planned for and implemented and works with the different partners to have those different trainings that are listed there, which we absolutely have partners in the community that can assist us with that. But just making sure we stick to that plan, we have, we secure the spaces for the trainings and things like that, all the little logistical things. That's something that right now, it's a lot of Gabby and I, I'll have some, Carrie Nice with the Sheriff's Office is really passionate about the professional development and training piece of this. Sheriff's Office already has motivational interviewing training planned for later this fall, and this was, this was something that she was very interested in supporting as well. But county staff is going to be supporting a lot of this, but that's, this is why this part of the plan is, is our primary lane, so to speak.
Yeah, I appreciate those extra comments, and I think, you know, for the record, that is exactly the role that the county should be playing and really being able to convene and keep some momentum around that continuity building and skill building, because I think that also goes a long way towards longevity for people in their jobs. They feel confident and like they're really a part of a collaborative in our community. So, I'm excited about that from sort of a global perspective, if you will. I do think with, I know you're about to talk about the MOU a little bit too, but that it feels important in there to be pretty clear about, you know, either number of positions or which specific positions within agencies that are a part of this collaborative will be expected to engage in those ongoing professional development opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I, it was a huge, it was a huge lift for the agencies that had folks there. I think Burt Nash had at least 10 people there that were at all four sessions. It was, it was a really important sign to me of the partners' investment in this work. And I think that the staff that were there, like these folks that are on the picture here, I think they felt invested in. And, but what also came up related, it's not necessarily professional development, but it came up in our debrief on Monday, and you touched on it, is, you know, do we have the workforce to support this, this work ongoing as well? Like, we can give them a lot of training, but it's hard to keep a well-trained, skilled workforce. This is, this came up in other conversations that I've had with folks earlier this week. It's a huge challenge for, to keep all this momentum going around a lot of our, whether it's supportive housing or behavioral health, we need a really talented, well, fairly compensated workforce to be helped for doing this work, and that's an ongoing challenge. So, we're going to have a work group that's going to be focused on professional development, and within that definition of professional development, we're going to be talking about the training curriculum, but we're also going to talk about ideas that we can strengthen that workforce and come up with new ways of, ideas to incentivize having, having the workforce we need to do this work in the long term.
I have a thought that kind of intertwines with that and looking at the list of agencies that were involved and then the list of trainings that we come up with by those agencies, and I know that most of the work does happen in Lawrence, but all of the agencies that were, were based in Lawrence, and so much of that, you know, we don't have something parallel in a lot of our smaller communities, but I think it's really important to, especially because this is the county and it has to be, you know, equally available everywhere, whatever we fund, to engage some unusual voices that maybe play some of that role in those communities but don't necessarily get the credit for it. So, I mean, I certainly know something about BRAC in Baldwin, and it was one that was funded through ARPA grants, but it's, it's not billed as supportive housing, but in many ways it operates that way, and empowering that staff to, to also speak into this conversation might pull out some different type of educational threads, and one of those would be aging, which I didn't see on the list. And there's, there's such a need for, we have our, you know, listed the 50 needed units for 55 and over, but which population is that? Is that the currently unhoused population that's 55 and older? Or is it, you know, like our population here that it struggles to stay housed, struggles to have the, the physical supports, the medical supports to, to function well? So, I just, just, I know this is ongoing work and there are a lot of pieces, but I would, I'd challenge to kind of put some feelers out in, you know, Udora, La Compté and Baldwin and see, you know, who does that work maybe even under the radar?
Well, I mean, I was talking to Sarah about the same thing earlier today. I think, you know, the Housing Authority and tenants to homeowners in a lot of ways are very, an Independence Inc. are very well positioned to expand on supporting that, that population of folks. They know it's a need, they already serve that population, but we can absolutely be more intentional about that. And I think that's really the, that's the next chapter in this work. Once we get past our goals and the strategic plan, we're focused on that meeting, reaching functional zero, but we know that if we don't keep our eye on our larger aging population, then it's, we aren't doing our jobs. I talked briefly about, so we're going to have the professional development to develop the training curriculum that we hope to implement later this fall. Some of them have already been, already happened. Our friends at the City of Lawrence have already organized a really great person-centered case management training that had great turnout from a lot of the same folks that were at this training. There's going to be a mental health first aid training that the city's Homeless Initiative Division is hosting later this month. And then I mentioned the motivational interviewing that's going to be later this year as well, and then probably one more, but we'll be planning out that schedule. I mentioned also that we're going to have a group that's going to be working on the development of two separate MOUs. One of those MOUs is going to be asking all the agencies within this collaborative to make a commitment to continuing to participate in the collaborative, identify staff that are going to go to those trainings to stay up to date on best practices, just to continue to be a part of that collaborative workspace. And then the other MOU is going to be, what we hope will be a template that could be implemented between a supportive property manager, whether that's tenants to homeowners or a private landlord, and a service provider that outlines exactly what each party is commit, will do. And that's what that shared framework means. We are going to commit to these basic elements. As a property manager, I will do X, Y, and Z. As a supportive service provider, I will do X, Y, and Z. So, we're going to work on developing those things, and we're going to really be leaning on the information that was shared with us from the Corporation for Supportive Housing training in those four days that we were all together. A big part of that is going to be the final piece that we committed to, and that is to develop the eviction prevention program. So, a lot of what you see in these, these boxes here, we were talking about just a few minutes ago with Angie and Matthew, and how you approach keeping tenants housed. We've spent historically, I think, a lot of time and energy on getting folks housed, but how do we really put some framework around keeping folks housed? So, this is just a sample that came through the Corporation for Supportive Housing, but Gabby has agreed to lead the development of the eviction prevention program, and that's not anything new for Gabby. Eviction prevention is at the heart of the Housing Stabilization Collaborative. It's designed to be preventive in nature and having collaborative partnerships with the providers and the landlords. So, this is an area that I think is really going to be, she's well-suited to lead, but she's also identified some folks that can assist with this, this work as well. And again, that's how do we bring together the case manager, the tenant and the property manager to all come together and come around, identify common goals that avoid the eviction, resolve, resolve challenges that are being had, and make sure that they're giving the tenant just as much of a voice in the process as possible as we, as we can to hopefully keep folks housed. But this is just a sample of what it looks like. That is an update. That's the last of my slides. Wanted to allow for any questions that you may have, and of course, we have partners here, so.
So, Jill, earlier you talked about, you know, that it's really on Douglas County to provide the resources and supports to help these organizations build capacity. Is there any discussion about, I mean, we've talked about that Douglas County alone can't do all of it, that it's a braided approach, and we use that word a lot. Is there any discussion in that MOU of, you know, some of our partners coming to the table with their resources as well?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
I think our, us leading, we're leading the work. We know that, we think there will be an investment on the part of the county, but we're going to be, the assumption is yes, that it will be, no one agency funds all these things. That was one of the key themes in our study session a couple of weeks ago. That's going to be an underlying value, I think, in the MOU and the work that we all do. And I really think that that's an assumption that all the providers in this room share with us. They get that, because that's how they make projects happen. We do it in a collaborative, braided fashion.
And as that process evolves, or maybe as that CIP evolves, maybe there's a greater discussion about, is there some kind of more, more or less systematic way about this is when we step into a larger amount, or this is when we are really kind of holding back and letting organizations come to us with their full funding plan, and then we just are supplemental to that? I just, in order to be equitable across applications and requests, I think we may have to put some thought into that also.
Absolutely. I think, and that's where I think, thinking about what is it, what could we make available for one-time capital if it, if one-time, when one-time capital is needed to, to fill a gap? But also, one of the, we know that some of the challenges for a lot of the folks that we have in those, in our goals to serve, there aren't a lot of funding sources, the housing, for the operating piece of it. We know that the Housing Authority has a tremendous tool in the vouchers that they have access to, but we could also think about what would, what would making, creating, creating a small number of locally funded vouchers look like that were funded by Douglas County, but maybe making space for other organizations to fund some locally, local vouchers that are more flexible in nature. But we have, we have great models of doing this work in a collaborative fashion.
So, the couple of DC fly-ins that have gotten to do over the last couple of years with the City of Lawrence, that's been a constant theme that we've brought to our federal delegation, is how much we need to have their eyes on operational funds, long-term operational funds, and also with fewer strings attached than like what those HUD funds have been, and they're just so difficult to, to access and so difficult to use.
Yeah, and I, one thing I didn't mention, I think, is really working in our favor too, that this has come up even just to implement that permanent supportive housing grant that we're partnering with Burt Nash on, is that, you know, what value can be, can be accomplished through Burt Nash being a CCBHC? I mean, that, just the value of housing folks, I think, there's new creative ways of putting together the funding that we need to support folks the right way.
I'm curious, so we have a lot of information in our packet from tenants to homeowners, kind of about things in progress, things that are in existence. We saw some examples, some specific examples of different types of supportive housing that currently exists. Do we, has there already been a list developed of like what our current inventory is and how we are tracking, you know, any of the ones that are about to open or sort of in progress or being built right now? Are those presumably going towards those numbers that you started us out with, right? The 130, so total units broken down into different categories? So, I'm just curious to know, one, I mean, I certainly assume that that's being tracked, but kind of just curious to know what we should expect in terms of some progress reports between now and 2027 about how many are coming online each year and opening up?
Yeah, yeah, the chart that I put in the packet.
Couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it's got, there's a lot of information on there, but it certainly doesn't show you, like, give you an estimated timeline of when those units are expected to come online. But that is something that we will be communicating with you all in terms of milestones in, in the project. The tenants to homeowners just happens to be one that has a little more, just a little bit more visual impact, but yeah, I mean, Shannon's here and Matthew can talk about their individual projects and the progress to date on them as well.
So, the Clinton Place expansion, which we're going to call the Delmar Place, we have a design, and we're about to submit the building permit. We will be breaking ground in June, and everyone here will get an invitation. We expect that to come on probably mid-2025. So, those 32 units, I would say the other thing that, about that 55-plus, we've already purchased a bus for that property in Clinton Place, because one of the things we do for our seniors is to provide some supports to age in place. So, we're really working on the aging in place model. We have tripled the number of fully handicap accessible ADA units that, above what HUD would have required us to build, because just based on our experience, we know that those are really difficult, and every other unit is convertible. So, if you know ADA, we have the A design and the B design, and so, so we're designing it that way, and as I say, we're trying to create those supports so that people can age in place there. I will say that the cottages is another supportive housing, and Jill was showing that eviction avoidant chart, and we have a partnership with Burt Nash, and we, in our tenant selection process and handbook, we, we do pretty much exactly what is outlined there. And so, we have that model. I don't know where that, those 10 units would be counted in the lineup of, what the timing was, but, but we have that also.
So, with those 32 units, as they come onboard, be part of the progress towards the 50 units that are on the list?
They would be, yes.
Okay. I do think that's something that the community be really interested in, is a, is just a visual dashboard to understand where things are in the pipeline, because many of those things we have invested in, we just, they haven't come fully to fruition yet.
Yeah, this is, we put this in your packet a couple of weeks ago, and I, I was hopeful that it would allow commissioners to see just each of the areas, what we had, what the need was, what we have, what's in the process, and where we're headed. So, it's a little hard to explain in some cases, but we can certainly resend it to commissioners and try to elevate it or make it clearer on our website and try to include that out there, if that's helpful.
I did review the chart, and I think maybe there is a lot of information there, so I think I maybe just missed that it was really highlighting what's in progress, because I know certainly the reason that we have the number, our goal numbers, is because we have an inventory of what was available at the beginning of the development of this plan and those plan goals, right? But some of the things are in progress, and so, it's really great to hear that update, Shannon, because I knew. Thanks for catching the cue, because I think that that's a really significant example of it's going to make a hu, it's an investment that's been made, it's a project that's in process, and it's going to make a huge dent in that one, one line of the goal. And those things, I think, along the way are important for us to elevate and, and find opportunities to really acknowledge those milestones, because it is such a over time, long game situation, but things are happening.
Yeah.
Daily and monthly, so.
And I think the need for a dashboard, I think that's a great idea. When we complete at least a draft one of the capital improvement plan, I think that'll articulate, we'll have timelines in there about when we expect those to be completed, when they'll become online. We also hope to show on that in capital improvement plan, like, how is it being funded? What are the different funding sources? So, we show it all. There's going to be a lot of tabs, but it's going to show all the different things that we, we know that folks are going to be interested in, the braided funding, the timeline. And I was going to say, just when we think about impact, if you look at this need for permanent, the supportive housing for, up here on top, that 49, I think that the project that Burt Nash is going to have going online is going to, I mean, it's, there's a potential that it will cut that in half, I think, which I think is going to be significant, and I'm looking forward to all these projects coming online. And there's a considerable amount of units at Castles on the Curve as well. I think it's, I don't have my notes, it's a, it's a mix of, I think there's at least 50 units. Oh, yeah, I have it there, sorry. Yep, 50 units that'll come online through the Habitat for Humanity project, but from a timing perspective, I think it's just, it's been tricky for some of the agencies to get a sense of when commitments.
I appreciated that chart. Like other commissioners, I had a hard time sort of deciphering it at the beginning.
A lot.
And then, so I think there's opportunities there, take some tips from our architect friends on GAN, you know, when this is going through, and I love the idea of sharing funding, because I think as a community member, when we put those goals up, it looks pretty daunting. And if we can start to have-- And if we can start to have, as you said, some celebrations and start to see how these projects come together, the funding parts, the partnerships, where they're happening in the community, it helps us all understand how the work is being done and makes it a little less daunting and a little less scary. So I, I'm excited to see that. Shannon, I appreciate you bringing up aging in place and, and wonder if there's another opportunity. We had a meeting a few weeks ago that I know all of you watched very carefully, where we talked about the intersectionality of all these programs that we're working on. And, you know, that's our, that's our senior care work. And so we have other organizations that are providing in-home care services right now that are helping reduce the need. It is a form of supportive housing, but we sometimes haven't seen it or called it that because it's preventing folks from being homeless. So I only say that as I think, one, I'm asking, like, how can we create a dashboard? And two, I'm not sure the dashboard is ever going to be big enough for all the things that we're doing in the community to try to help our most vulnerable populations.
Well, and one thing that, okay, make sure. One thing is, we know particularly at Babcock, but also at Clinton Place, we have a ton of residents who are serviced by Project Lively and Pace and Trinity and different things. And without attaching people's names, we could certainly get a count of what that looks like. Because as I say, that is part of our aging in place model. It's very, we don't have assisted living, but we have very helpful living. And so we have a lot of people receiving meals. Our staff delivers, you know, like harvesters to the door because our, our residents can't lift. And so that's what I say, we, we are really working on a robust age in place model because over the years, we've seen less availability of locations for someone to go if they can't live independently. And so we're trying to extend the ability to stay in our units as long as possible.
And as a community, we really need to be celebrating that we have that, but also talking about it as the model for, a lot of other folks can help their neighbors stay in place, age in place with just some of these same kinds of supports, so that we broaden this beyond just what does government do? What do nonprofits do? But what do we do as a community, as families, as neighborhoods, expanding it? So I, I know Sarah had some points and all.
I was just going to say, I had this conversation with Shannon and then Megan Poindexter and Cynthia Lewis this week. And I do think, we've been talking about trying to bring this back in front of the commission, and then pesky land use things get in the way. And we haven't had time to really have a more in-depth conversation about the, our frail and elderly seniors in our community, and how do we approach this, this particular dilemma? And I think that group would like to come back together this fall and really talk about some potential models in this space. Because I do think the Housing Authority is doing more than many housing authorities to sort of help some folks age in place. Because I think when I talk to Cynthia and Megan, my understanding is there's not a single nursing home in Douglas County that takes Medicaid anymore. Not a single nursing home takes Medicaid, not through the front door. So that's a huge problem for our community. And, you know, there is no place for these folks to go in our community.
And Lawrence Community Shelter ends up serving a lot of them, and they, they struggle just as much.
And we can do better, yeah.
I was going to say, in terms of updates as well, Gabby reminded me that a part of the framework for implementation of a place for everyone, the larger strategic plan, is that there's updates. Gabby and the, and Galal Abaid and Leah Roslin that are leading the operationalizing of a place for everyone have created some great update forms for each of the work groups to provide updates so that we can come to you all at least twice a year to this commission, the community as a whole, and the city commission, and provide updates on progress to date. So we will have some different ways of sharing what we're up to.
I wonder if it isn't worth a conversation with the KU Data Visualization Collaborative? Because this is what we're talking about, is we have a complex set of data. We need to be able to show it in a way that is meaningful to the community. That might be a partnership worth pursuing. And then they get to have a piece, a place in this work also. So that's one thought. Much of the funding that the county will entertain, source-wise, for this kind of work will come from that behavioral health sales tax, is that correct?
That's up to you all.
But I see Sarah nodding.
Yeah, I think that's our intent, commissioners, is that it comes from the behavioral health sales tax.
Okay.
Bob can't be here today, but I, I would say that, you know, the behavioral health and supportive, supportive housing has been a key overlap between the safe and affordable, affordable, safe and affordable housing and the behavioral health, community health plan for well over five years now. So this, this is, it's a logical extension of our behavioral health investment.
And kind of a, a final point is, I think we need to know, you know, we collectively, we the commission, but also we the community, what is the cost of doing nothing? How do we put a dollar figure on, because we're looking, we're putting this in front of the community and saying, here are the things that we're likely to, at least the county will contribute to paying for. There'll be other funding structures also. But what is the cost of doing nothing in, in its, in what it does to our downtown businesses? What it does to, you know, emergency services? I know that is really hard to pin down. I don't know if there is a way that we could look into, if there are other communities that have wrestled with that. But it's a really important data point that we keep in front of the community, if we had it.
I would just, yeah, I think we're, we're constantly trying to paint that picture with our familiar faces work that we've been doing. And a lot of that is using data from MyRC to paint a picture of how, what utilization of services look like for, for folks. And if we have more, better information about who is unhoused within that population that's frequently utilizing EMS service, hospital, and other services, we can start to paint that picture a little better.
But it's, it's, I mean, it's squishy at best. So, I mean, I just, it's not like it's the kind of thing that we can easily, you know, pull off a shelf and type it in and call it good. It's, it is definitely a squishy number in terms of what's included and what's not.
I would say, I appreciate that ask, Commissioner Reilly. I think, I think it is very squishy and difficult to come up with numbers, just like, I think the numbers that have been projected about the potential cost of these different goals in this plan are, you know, they're a best possible estimate, but also squishy numbers in and of themselves. And I think sometimes numbers people really attach to. And I fear that that's the wrong focus. I think there are a lot of ways to talk about this, that it's common sense, that there may be more visible capital investments, upfront investments that people react to. And it, it can be hard not to, not to be able to concretely contrast that with what it's costing to do nothing, your point. And I think that is an important piece of the conversation. I think it's hard to get concrete data around. And so, at least in my conversations with folks, I think there's a lot of common sense to it in that when you can sort of leverage the types of anecdotal stories that, that we know are true and are happening, the, the huge gaps in our community, like no assisted living or nursing home facilities that take Medicaid, and how that is a huge pressure point that's escalating a crisis that we're trying to figure out how to fill in the gap, that some of those are really tangible and helpful things for people to hear and understand. But I get a little bit worried about so much or too much focus on, on dollar amounts. Just my personal opinion.
Commissioners, other thoughts or other questions? I guess kind of my, and I know we're wrapping up time. My final thought was how much I notice that, other than Ninth Street Baptist, how much the churches are missing from this conversation? And how much they could be playing a role? So I want to call that out too. It is not all government, it is not all nonprofits, it's not all on families who are bearing the burden for a lot of things that we don't even see, that don't even fall on our radar. But there's also a huge opportunity for churches to be stepping up in this space, and I would just call them out for that.
Yeah, I think a huge part of the county and the city's role in developing a place for everyone and operationalizing a place for everyone is, it's convening all the stakeholders. And I know that faith partners have been a big missing piece for a good amount of time. Or we just haven't intentionally connected with them the way we should. But we're doing that in a multitude of, of ways, through the operationalizing of this plan. And I think, yeah, I, I was really encouraged to see that submission from Ninth Street. And they're working very close, they're, that's a partnership with Family Promise. You'll hear more about that later this year.
And I guess I would feel obligated to also call out the state of Kansas for not expanding Medicaid and Medicaid codes so it could be used for supportive housing and for funding the IDD waitlist. Significant numbers of those folks in that number, you know, 97 of that total on that spreadsheet are folks awaiting services with developmental disabilities.
Thank you. That is, it's such a big, it's in front of us that we forget to call it out. So I appreciate you mentioning that. Commissioners, are there any other thoughts? With that, we will recess until our 5:30 business meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here.